Good evening. I'd like to call the Village Board Meeting for the Village of Cary for January 4th, 2022, to order a roll call at 6:00 on the menu.
Cavalli?
Here.
Ballier?
Here.
Duda?
Yes.
Walder?
Here.
McGowan?
Here.
Winehammer?
Here.
Thank you. Would you join me in the pleasure of meeting?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united in all, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now moving to the public open forum where the public is invited. If you have anything to comment on any matter of public concern that otherwise haven't been attended, I have a couple people, Ted Rhodes.
I'm learning here on this microphone, so we'll see if those persons. First and foremost, Happy New Year to everybody. Hope you and all your families are healthy and had a nice holiday season and working through this. Just have a statement I'd like to read. Good evening and Happy New Year. As stated in the meeting on December 21st, we applied for a video gaming license. A letter was then drafted to us December 22nd, the day after the meeting stating that we were considered a gaming cafe and not eligible. We originally submitted this application the first week of November and have been working with the teams at the Village of Cary and the Henry County Health Department since August of 2021 to fulfill all the requirements for the gaming licenses, which includes an upgraded status and food classification with the county. We have endless possibilities of what we can serve, as well as we have a lease on a commercial kitchen. As a special note, we could have put the commercial kitchen in the room we have set aside for gaming, but when considering our options in the village and community's wishes and interests, we decided to use the room for gaming instead of having machines sectioned off in front, as you currently see in other local family-friendly businesses in town. We coordinated with the Henry County Health Department and are considered a commercial kitchen by their requirements. We have another commercial kitchen leased as well. We received our estate gaming license and are not considered a gaming cafe by the gaming company or the state. We are truly a unique business. In addition, as by pure definition of gaming cafes, we are in no way considered this type of business. As your names are on the letterhead that I was sent in regards to us being a gaming cafe, I wasn't sure if you had seen a copy of the letter or were even aware. It seems to me that the mayor is one designated to accept or deny these applications, made this decision without ever visiting our new location. Our menu is diverse and another establishment Cary has been granted the gaming license under the updated codes. If you look at the other establishment's menu, they're a glorified sandwich pizza establishment that promotes discounted drinks, shots, et cetera, including Dollar Yager Meister Shots on Wednesdays. They have set up a style that incorporates a Las Vegas-style atmosphere, combined and mirroring exactly what other local gaming cafes in the area offer. It is also my understanding that this establishment purchased Grover's and Fox River Grove. Their hours of operation at the other establishment also include AM hours that mirror the other gaming cafes in the area. Our expanded menu is included in the packet. I have a packet for you guys, and our full menu will be offered February 1st. We will fall well within the gaming revenues ratio, and unlike some others, our business plan is not centered around the gaming segment of revenue. I'm requesting that a data set for a committee meeting that will review our application and allow us the same opportunity that others currently have in our community, our community, as we are all part of this. Please get back to me on this within 10 days. My email and phone numbers are listed below. Thank you for your time and consideration. I would also like to introduce Kevin Crowe and Linnea Brown from J&amp;J Ventures. You guys want to stand up for a minute? These two have over 50 years of experience in the gaming industry. How many customers would you say you guys work with altogether?
Probably around three or four.
And you've been in my establishment play. Do I mirror or resemble in any way, shape, or form a gaming cafe?
No.
Thank you. So hopefully you can hear me standing up so I don't have to leave nobody. I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus. We're all part of this community. I feel like we play a great role in this community. There's structure to the way you guys have to work, you guys. I get that. But I also think that something is huge mess here, huge mess. And I think that the route we went with everybody to get to where we are today is the right route to go, and I think we have abided and fulfilled everything based on what's in the codes, as well as what's set by Henry County. I think that we've always been different than what everybody else offers out there, regardless of the game. That's who we are. So I understand it's kind of difficult to pinpoint where does happiness fall into this spectrum? We are 100% not a gaming cafe. We have followed the guidelines, and we have met those guidelines. So I would like a review and someone to get back to me to figure out how we can move this one forward. I have that whole building there, and in my heart, in my mind, after talking to everybody here and speaking with Brian and the crew, I understand, like, I get it. I bring my kids in the tracks and these other establishments, and we love going to those establishments. But I had an opportunity to do something there where I didn't have to have these things front and center. There's still a revenue stream, which I should be entitled to, you know? If I put forth and follow what needed to be set up for those, and that's all I'm asking, because that is what it is. You know, I feel like with additional license that have been given out in this town, I think that the interest was there, the right interest, and everybody was doing the right thing, but I do feel like on return, you're not necessarily getting what's being proposed. And I say that on more than one type of business. When we have a business out there promoting $3 Jack Daniels every day and dollar shots two days a week, that's about as close as they can come to Las Vegas without giving away free drinks. That is Las Vegas right there for you, and that's what you've got in your backyard. But I'll be honest, I don't care about the other person's business, but we need an equal playing field, and I have no desire or interest in offering discounted any of that stuff. I want to be different, just like we've always been, diversified menu, all the reason to be. I am not opening up at 9:00 o'clock. We go from 5:00 o'clock on and we offer food late. That is our deal, and that is where we're going with this. So, you know, I feel like we've done everything that we can do, and we provided the right information, and we've had other people go through what was required of us, and we've met those requirements. So if you guys, if somebody could just get back to us, that would be awesome. I have packets for each of you.
Brian, could you give those penalties?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks. I appreciate it. And all I need to talk about is I do. And Scott and Jacob, I didn't know, but I can certainly email you information in these packets as well, more than happy to do that, okay? Thank you very much for your time, Scott.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to address the village board on any other matter? Thank you. We will now close open forum at 6:17. I have nothing to report under my report, although we decided to do a Maplewood meeting, so we get a lot of people here for our second meeting, so thank you for coming out. It's an important part of our decision-making process is having community engagement, so it's nice having people out here, so thank you very much for coming. Any trustee reports? I'm not aware of any. Then I will entertain a motion to approve consent agenda items A through G, as shown on the village's website and displayed on the video monitor during the village board meeting. Roll call, please.
Walder?
Yes.
Duda?
Yes.
Cavalli?
Yes.
Winehammer?
Yes.
Ballier?
Yes.
McGowan?
Yes.
Thank you. Now moving to items where stuff would action, we're going to have a discussion regarding the development of the Maplewood property. Let me reiterate, there's no decisions being made tonight. This is an attempt to introduce the developer to the Village of Cary and introduce the Village of Cary to the developer. We've had meetings ongoing. They are attending this meeting via Zoom due to travel restrictions with planes and things, so we'll do the best that we can with the Zoom call. So I have one, I have just before we get into this, I just wanted to mention that we did have one email from Barbara Island wanting to, she asked a series of questions which we'll get back to. I just want that into the record. We will handle that internally. So Brian, I will turn it over to you.
The discussion this evening is to discuss the Maplewood property, as mentioned by the mayor. The developers participating remotely, but I'll have a brief presentation and I'll provide, you know, overview of the property and some history regarding the site, and then the developer will get more details as far as sort of the whole concept and the site date. Little overview for the current sale process as far as the process of getting the more rent today. District 26 contracted with CBRE, a commercial real estate brokerage firm, to market the property for sale last November. They entered into an agreement with the subject, Air Building Company, for the real estate purchase agreement for that site in March of last year. And then beginning in June through the month of December last year, staff had various discussions or meetings with the development team regarding the site and some of the concept plans that they had initially presented. This evening, as the mayor mentioned, is the first time that the board is seeing plans for the project, and it was kind of an introductory meeting for the village board and the developer to discuss the site. Should a project move forward beyond this evening, there would be future meetings held to discuss the project through the village's own entitlement and public hearing process, so certainly there would be more opportunities for public participation in the future around this project. A brief history in the site, the subject property was part of the original corporate membership of the village when the village was incorporated in 1893. The village boundaries at the time went out to the western edge, most edge where Paragon Road currently lies. In the 1940s, property around the subject site was developed as part of the Frankie subdivision. The first portion of that is in 1945 was developed to the south, which is the lots that essentially are from Main Street to Friends Avenue. In the 1950s, there was a first addition proposed to that subdivision that was included in the subject property, which you see on the slide. The school existed in the property at the time along Friends Avenue, but there was a proposed subdivision for the rear portion of the site, which was never actually constructed. In the 60s and 70s, future phases of the Frankie subdivision were constructed to the west of the property, which shows how the neighborhood has developed around the property throughout history. The reason why I'm presenting this information is for knowledge, is it shows the development patterns as far as how the property has developed, with the northern portion of the site never formally being developed for residential or commercial development. When the school was constructed, various phases of development occurred, the school, bus barn, and then also the baseball field in the property. But the property was never officially developed with typical subdivision improvements like stormwater detention requirements and things like that. So certain storm events that do occur, there is some standing water that occurs on the northwest corner of the site due to the natural catastrophe that occurs there, but that gives a history for how the site came to be in its current condition. The existing use of the property obviously are the vacant school building, which has been closed for over 10 years, the bus parking facility currently utilized by District 26, and also the baseball field that's around the property. As with any proposal that the village has received, we have various land use policy documents that we refer to for long-term visioning for the community. Two plans that specifically provide guidance towards this site include the Village's Comprehensive Plan, which was most recently adopted in January 2015, and also the Downtown Cary Strategic Plan, which was adopted in the past year. I'll get into small details for each of those plans as far as how they speak to the site, the guidance that's in there. Specifically for the comprehensive plan, there's extensive references to the Maplewood property throughout the comprehensive plan. This slide kind of summarizes some of the highlighted portions of guidance, specifically that multifamily development should be encouraged in and around downtown Cary, which includes the mid-site. Site planning and design should be sensitive to the needs of the residential neighborhoods that surround the site, and that the village should continue to partner with District 26 to ensure responsible redevelopment. Throughout the plan, there are various concept plans that were presented. This is one of the subarea plans specifically for the mid, that include the Maplewood site, that included recommended site elements or concepts, not to indicate that this plan is what should be built on the property, but just to show illustratively how development should interact with the existing neighborhood and existing uses surrounding it. So specifically, some of the guidance that's provided in the comprehensive plan is a recommendation for transitional development, so that development will step up from a single-family neighborhood to have lower density uses in the periphery of the site, and potentially higher density uses further away from the single-family residences to the northeast portion of the property. Recommendation for multifamily housing, neighborhood connectivity, so there's an existing street network is extended into the development and utilized from that perspective, so that residents of both the neighborhood and the proposed development can access downtown and other surrounding amenities. Recommendation also includes, it just provides an open space for the benefit of the neighborhood and development, and then providing buffer areas to buffer and between the various types of development in the area. More specifically, recently, the village concluded the Downtown Cary Strategic Plan. This plan was a similar to the Council of Plan, it's a policy document that speaks towards specifically development in the downtown core. There's more guidance within this plan, again, with Maplewood being a very priority site closest to the downtown area. Language within this document as far as what type of development would be appropriate for the property. So again, there's language, which I won't read the entire slide, but there is guidance as far as the type of development, ways that as a property were to develop, how it should interact with adjacent land uses, and then try to connect the downtown to support businesses within the downtown core itself. As it mentioned, the site is identified as a key opportunity site from the standpoint that the opportunities sites are identified by, with unique kind of once-in-a-generation opportunities for redevelopment, that they could have a longstanding impact or benefit to the community if they're redeveloped, and how they could support and help sustain the downtown core area. Again, with the, similar to the comprehensive plan, there are certain design elements that are recommended for the Maplewood site, which kind of mirror what the comprehensive plan mentions, a recommendation for new multifamily housing. Due to the existing housing market within the Village of Cary, there's a need for more market multifamily housing units. Combatability with existing neighborhood, transitional development, again, providing parks for public use, respecting existing streets capable on the perimeter, so that the scale of structures along adjacent streets are consistent and provide consistent setbacks, and then also provide, provide pedestrian bicycle and also vehicle connectivity to even the neighborhood or surrounding land uses. As mentioned, the development team is participating online via Zoom this evening. There's four individuals that are participating that will provide additional information regarding their proposal, their project. Following their presentation, I'll be happy to answer any additional questions we may have or additional discussion regarding their project. At this point, I'll be happy to turn it over to the development team. They can provide some more information on their project, and then their presentation as well, and then again, happy to answer questions.
Thank you.
This is Jeff Campbell. Just want to make sure, a quick mic check. Everybody hear us? Okay.
Could you hear me fine, Jeff?
Okay, great. Thank you. And let me share my screen here. Everybody just a moment. Okay, is that all? Screen put up as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Thanks. Everyone, Jason, did you want to introduce yourselves and introduce AR Building?
Thank you. As I come up to you here, I will just, you know, really appreciate this. Oh, Jeff, sorry. Hey, guys. I apologize. I was on mute. I'm sorry, everybody. Hi, I'm Jason Campbell. It's the Senior Vice President of AR Building Company. I have Emily Mitchell here on the line, Director of Development, AR Building Company. Thank you all very much for being with us here tonight. I appreciate you all coming out. Unfortunately, we couldn't be here tonight, but for everybody who can truly understand, on Saturday, they already canceled our return flights, and I know AR is pretty messed up right now, so it's pretty hard to get up there. So we really appreciate you doing this for us, and we're happy to answer any questions as we proceed. Again, you know, we'll kind of go through this, and you know, feel free to ask any questions to us and anything that comes up. You know, AR Building Company is a 50-plus-year-old firm located in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. We build, buy, manage all of our own property, and there's a map of our, of our locations. We have over 9,000 units in 10 states, maybe this is 11 because we keep adding more where we have new development. We're owned by one person. He has no partners, no investors. There's no, nobody outside. The firm is small, nimble, and quick. We have 300 employees, but we really treat it like a family-run business, because that's really what it is. If we want to do a project, you know, we're quick to make a decision and move forward with it. The people who work on these projects, such as myself, Emily, even the architect, who's been with us for over 20-plus years, we're here when the project is done. The one caveat beyond all this stuff of having a company of the size of a person is that we don't sell any properties. Over the 50-plus years of the company, we've sold maybe 200 or 300 units, and that was really based upon the fact that they didn't fit the criteria. They weren't even, you know, of a caliber of stuff we have now or other stuff that we started out, student housing, 20-unit building, stuff like that. So this is all classic product, and what we intend to build here is that, and so we intend to keep it for generations as it's set up. Jeff, can you go to the next slide? This gives you an understanding of kind of the fit and finish of our product. On the left there is a property you can go down. North Kingston, Rhode Island, called Reynolds Farm. That's a 45-unit building. You can see from the exterior, we use brick, we use siding, we use AZAC trim, we use Trex decking. We use high-end product because not only do we want it to look good, since we own it, we have to maintain it. And so having the brick on that, having the higher materials, durable materials, gives us the advantage of making sure our buildings look great year after year. We are buildings of these materials. They look brand new and they're 30-plus years old, and that's really how we like to keep it. We're very finicky regarding the look of the buildings. We always stay renting the property. Yeah, that's, that's a big one, but they have to look good. Nobody wants to live in a place that they don't feel confident when they come in. They don't feel that they've, you know, gotten pricing out of it, or they want it to feel as though it's yours. And so we make sure that the properties look clean and brand new. On the right is another property in Pittsburgh, musical Bell Lots. And we're looking at a product like this here, younger apartment buildings. We're looking at these townhomes. And again, the, you know, the kind of demographic for that is retirees, people who want to downsize, they want to live in the community. They might want the size of a home, but they don't want to maintain it. And so that's where this product comes in, people feel well in the neighborhood. And on the bottom right is Evergreen Apartments, another Pittsburgh project. That's actually one big building. It's 92 units. It's a brand-new building which just opened up. We leased it up maybe four or five months. So it's right next to the Parkway that comes into the city, and we're very proud of that and it looks. Jeff, you go to the next slide. Again, here's some more product. On the top left, it's 137 units built in downtown New London, Connecticut. Again, iron material, stone, and brick. And that one was actually the centerpiece of downtown New London, Connecticut. The property's separated for 60 years. We were able to come and build this building least dramatically we could, because there was nothing new in the community. They needed new housing, they needed new apartments. People want to stay in the community. They want to have a high-end property to live in. They don't want to maintain a house, or some people never want to own a house, and so they're choosing properties like this. The rest of the pictures here kind of show the fit and finish. On the bottom left, you'll see our hardwood vinyl flooring, floor-to-ceiling windows, open space planned. On the right, you see the kitchen, granite countertops, stainless steel appliances, and on the right, you kind of see the Trex decking. Every, every apartment has a balcony, and that's a big deal for us. We like that, the natural end of balcony. People don't want to live in a box, and they want to feel the nature. They want to have the ability to go outside. And so we feel that that's not only a great look for the building, but it's a selling point. People, people want to have it. They don't want to give it up when they go to a, a larger community. Go to the next slide, Jeff. And, and one other thing beyond that, and I'll let Jeff talk about the location, is that the, we always have a community building, whether the community building has a hearth room, fireplace, we always have a pool, we always have a leasing office, place for people to gather. So fitness center is a big deal for us, finding that it gets used often. Other spaces don't really get used often, but having a nice full-fledged fitness center and pool attracts a lot of people, and it again, gives you the feeling of a luxury community, which it is. So I'll hand it over to Jeff here. You can talk about the, the site and where we are.
Thanks, Jason. So again, my name is Jeff Campbell. I'm the Principal and Architect of Rothschild, and I'm glad that we're an architecture firm. And we've done all the work that we've seen so far with AR Building. As you just mentioned, we've been working with, with AR for over 21 years now, so it's a bit sense of what they produce. So the site, you know, Brian, to be clear, in a nutshell, so I can go through this part relatively quickly, but it is worth just understanding exactly what this property boundaries are on an aerial map, so you can see that on the screen here. It does include the parking area to the right, the school, ball fields behind it, and the ends of the metro station. You know, Cary really does have a nice climate, and that's always been really helpful, you know, when we come in here and look at this from a, from a nice standpoint when we were first approaching the site. So we had actually looked at a lot of the things that we shared earlier, certainly understood, you know, that the needs here and the intentionality of this project, you know, really picking back the townhomes and lower density around the exterior with the higher density towards the rail line, the idea that there might be some open space as well. These were all things that we were, you know, we're looking at as we were advancing our designs and trying to come up with an approach to the site. Also looked at the strategic plan, so in that, you can see in the upper right-hand corner here, oops, excuse me. This actually, you know, shows a proposal from SRT Plan, what exists on that site, something else to look at, and then a close-up there, and, 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 several, several these options, but this is one that, you know, just, it seemed to align with kind of what we were thinking. So happy to go back to that stuff, but I just got coverage there. We already did a site survey as well. PVE's been working with Walt Hamilton to do a lot of the site engineering, the site infrastructure. The site here, here, it is rotated 90 degrees. The north is to the left here, and the rail line can just be on the left as well, just as an orientation of rest of the pages. So we really looked at this and you tried to understand what would be appropriate from a, you know, from, really understanding with what AR presents from the demographic, what's within the past, where they feel confident about the area. We've also worked, you know, with planning staff to kind of look through any of those things. This is the initial concept that they presented. I'm not going to spend too much time on it, except to say that, you know, we were coming in with the idea that we would have apartment buildings, you know, roughly 45-unit apartment buildings, and then surrounding the site with more townhomes to sort of buffer the existing residences. We met with planning staff with this. We got a lot of good feedback on that, but at the same time, we're also doing marketing diligence and understanding some of the engineering. And there was one thing in particular that really caused us to take a sharp turn in the design. I'm going to actually hand it over to Rocco Magreen here from PVE to kind of talk about that particular element.
Good evening. My name is Rocco Magreen, I'm the Principal with PVE LCMB, specializing in land development. As Jeff mentioned, we looked at the existing site, actually while onsite during our site visit. We met a gentleman maintaining the ball fields, and we were talking about, you know, drainage and any significant events. He mentioned that there was a significant event in New York history that was four feet or so of water on the baseball fields, and that gave us some pause, because we understand what's, what's causing that, that happened again, what impacts that would have on our proposed development. So we did a regional drainage study that talked about, and really looked So we did a regional drainage study that talked about, and really looked at, how does this site drain relative to the overall drainage area of the region? And what we found through looking at an expanded view of the community, is about 114 acres of area that drains to a single culvert outfalling underneath the railroad lines. And when we looked at that, we saw that, we looked at the type of culvert there, the size of it. We saw this could be a construction. And we looked and did some calculations, identified that, in fact, with the amount of water that's draining to that point, there could be an instance during a sizable enough event where there could be water ponded on the existing ball fields. That really led to further analysis as to what impact would our development have on that storage area right now that's actually being... That water is being stored on the Maplewood School property. So we looked at that. We wanted to do it in several different ways. Working with AR builders, a sort of conservative approach, and said, "But we don't want to have any of our parking lots be inundated with 100-year storm, or any of our buildings be inundated with a 500-year storm." That's really well above most conventional codes. So we did an analysis to ensure that the amount of storage that's currently provided for the 100- or 500-year storms on the Maplewood School site would be retained on-site post-development, so after the site was graded and constructed. And that really led to a significant shift in the overall plan, if you will, what we're going to show next and what's actually currently proposed. Jeff, next slide, please. This really shows the inundation area with our previous design based upon the 100-year event, or what's commonly known as the 100-year event. So there would be approximately a foot of water or so through these areas, maybe two feet in some locations, but approximately an elevation of 822. Jeff, next slide. We looked at this and said, "We're going to prioritize the storage of water on our site to ensure we're not doing any harm to our neighbors, we're maintaining that level of storage on the Maplewood School, and develop instead..." Develop a grading plateau, and that plateau was intended to elevate the proposed buildings above those certain elevations. And this is not a FEMA study. This is a regional study that we're doing based upon the existing storm network, most notably that culvert underneath the rail line. So this design here sought to define the grading plateau, or kind of the development path, which then Jeff worked with and established another development configuration, layout for apartment buildings, towns, etc., meaning both the township we should work through. But the intent here is to maintain the lower-left-hand corner, or the northwestern corner of the site, the portion, the triangular portion, as regional storage that's shown here now, and then place our stormwater management upon in that as well. Working with the village, very helpful, providing information in terms of regional studies, existing infrastructure, and it's really expedited our review and analysis. So that's why thank you to Ryan's team for assisting with that. Jeff, I'll kind of turn it back to you from a layout perspective of how we drive these buildings and how this interacts with you.
Sure. So this is... I think we're excited about this plan as well. It is unfortunate that we lose roughly 35% of the site in order to maintain and make sure we're balancing for that stormwater event. But we do think we can get a very successful project here and build a nice community. One of the things that we did introduce was, one of those earlier photos had a 92-unit building. We're actually proposing a 99-unit building that would be in this corner. We intentionally decided this as far away from the existing neighborhood as we could, tried to keep it right along the rail line and close to the metro station, just from a density concern. That also gave us the opportunity to bring the pool area, which originally was in the lower-right-hand corner. Working with staff, they encouraged that the management office, fitness center, that type of thing, be more localized inside the site. So we introduced that more into the side of the site. There's a couple other buildings, 45-unit building, set frame that had really created a nice streetscape as you come through here, that would both have the appropriate density but also be removed from the existing single-family neighborhood as the next move is that possible. We also maintained the bellmans around the exterior, again, trying to work that transition. And then, right now, we're calling this Recreation Green Space. Ultimately, this is something we'll have to work with planning staff, and we'd love to get feedback on what this space actually becomes and looks like. It does have to have that extreme event of, it would be designed to have that extreme event of flooding scenario. But we would obviously like to make this as nice an amenity as we can. So I think I can go back to Rocco, who we're trying to hear, to talk about the connector road that we're looking at as well.
Thanks, Jeff. In working with the village, planning staff, we talked about some of the goals and comprehensive plan and how to achieve those. One of the things that was identified was a connector road from Caryel Donklin to the... From the west, kind of show there in the upper-right-hand corner of the slide. Thank you, Jeff. That would connect through our site to the commuter parking lot, the metro. We went through and did a conceptual design, identified some layout possibilities, road widths, grading, and some additional stormwater we would have. One of the most important elements of this configuration, this element, is it goes across the existing stormwater retention area that's just to the north of the existing community. Kind of says, "Thank you, Jeff." And when we do that, if that's installed, that's going to really remove some of the capacity and really reconfigure that pond, which lends to more of a regional facility that would only have areas to go onto the Maplewood site. So there would be some need to reconfigure that existing stormwater maintenance facility, bringing capacity onto the Maplewood site. And that's something we would have to finalize through engineering, but that would conceptually be the impact, or I'd say one of the impacts associated with the installation of this road. Also, it all falls to the main culvert going underneath the metro station, as well as the total of over 1,000 feet of off-site road on the, called the western side, and then approximately 145 feet on the eastern side of the site connected to the metro property. And this is where, Jeff, I'll let you lead it with, but we basically took the existing site that we had talked about before, and then including the road, we removed some parking that was adjacent, or I would say to the north of the larger building because we didn't want my folks backing into this more commuter road, like the better text, the local road that we promptly proposed going from metro to Caryel Donklin. That's why we lost some parking.
Yeah, so this plan is essentially the same as the same layout as the earlier plan, only with the loss of the parking right into here, and we lose 29 spaces total. And then the substantial investment here on this road connector as well. So I think just lastly, I wanted to give you just a few little visualizations of what this would start to feel like. So this is a quick aerial perspective we've done from the east, so we can see the rail line and the bell. See that green, that underlined green space that's burnt out? The bellmans are getting outside, and 45, 90, and then on the interior. These are, at least our starting point, are buildings that we've done in the past or very similar in the past. As Jason mentioned, to begin with, we like to use high-quality materials. AR owns everything I've ever worked on for them. They still own. So they do like to make sure that the materials remain as free. They tend to gloat on a break with that. So here you see a typical elevation that we would expect for the 45s. And then just a quick visualization of what that central space would be, which again, would have that sort of sense of community with the three buildings surrounding it, but at the same time, not be impacting the single-family home directly between the east and to the south. So that's a quick overview. Happy to go back and ask any questions or answer any questions about it, about our approach. I know one of the issues we did when the park was a connector road in general, because it is such a sizable investment, and given some of the challenges from a basic different stormwater perspective, it does become fairly challenging. Before we get into that, Jason, under presenting us, you wanted to add, or you have to do that?
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to say regarding the stormwater, and I'm sure we'll get into it. One thing to note on the roadway that connects, you know, the concept planes, and we looked at it thoroughly, and you could really see we took a lot of inspiration in the original plane from that, kind of disregarding that in the back. Yeah, those are concept planes, so I don't expect that somebody would have all the feasibility and understanding of that. And when you go and look at the site, you don't really notice it until you find out. A lot of water pours in there, and I'm sure a lot of the community can understand. So for us, we tried to figure this out. The overall idea, I think, of the connecting road and all of that is to create a road network. As we can do the road today, it doesn't really create a road network. Rather, it creates a steam pipe from one side to the other, and it goes right through the community on the back. And then, from a public use standpoint, if anybody were to cut across, they would be cutting across through parking lots as opposed to open streets, which we originally tried to design. Also, with this concept, the stormwater, we have to get into some sort of shared agreement where water from off-site pours onto this site. So essentially, this site is dealing with a lot of the overflow. Whereas, I think we probably might have some before, but this is a large stormwater system that connects across two properties that have different ownership to deal with the stormwater issue. We're really not dealing with the issue because, as we understand, and I'm happy to be corrected, is that it happens in the culvert, and it gets backed up. So I think it's something we should all keep in mind. We're happy to have these discussions. We're happy to work with it. But we're trying to make the best design that fits within the community. And also, at the end of the day, we can provide green space for people and try to deal with the stormwater issue, which I'm sure will only grow bigger over time. So I just wanted to explain that and also to say thank you for taking the time today. I know there's a lot of people, community there, so I know, happy to hear from everybody who wants to talk, and we're here to answer any questions, so thank you.
Thank you very much for that information. Does the board have any preliminary questions, or I'd kind of like to see what the community has to say when you guys can kind of bounce off that, that works for you? I've had just one person sign in mic voice, and I will get to everybody else, too. Mic voice, did you want to come up?
Sure. I remove this for you. Thank you. Can you hear me okay? All right, great. Couple of preliminary things. First of all, is there any indication of what number of units in the development would be owned versus rented?
I believe it's 100% rental.
100% rental. Who was going to be, who's going to be responsible for the due diligence on the financials for the companies involved here? The reason I ask that is I tried to get some information on AR Building, and I really couldn't find a great deal at all. They're not listed and done in Bradstreet. There is something in the Better Business Bureau. They're not accredited, and their information is being updated. So I'm kind of a business kind of guy, and think that somebody ought to have the responsibility for doing that. I don't know if that would be this group, 26, or a combination, or who. But I'd like to know who's going to be responsible for that.
Why don't you continue with your questions, and we'll have the developer answer these.
Okay, all right, great. Are there any other prior developments near us? Is this the first one in Illinois?
We'll get to keep going.
Oh, all right. Just want to keep going, okay. All right, the height or the number of stories on the 99-unit building? Like to know what that is. Another comment about this situation, why did we receive such short notice on this meeting? You know, this was put on the agenda. I found out about it from a newspaper article that was published, I think, on the first of the month. So we've got to have some heads up on this kind of stuff if this is going to go on.
I'm honored to tell you, Alan, we've been publicizing this. There's been articles in the paper about this moving forward. We posted it on our website. It's been on our career tweet link. It's been on Facebook. We've probably for at least the last month or so, we've been publicizing that this is going to be available.
Because I haven't seen it, so I'll go back and take a look at that, but I think that that's very important. And then, in terms of this material that's being shown here, is that going to be available to us?
We can make it available, yes.
Okay, all right, all right. That's what I wanted to... Okay, that would go for my comments, then.
Okay, I'll let the developer answer your questions now.
Yeah, I can answer that. On the 99-unit building, just like we showed for the first building we showed in North Kingstown, it's a four-story building. So depending on how you do height, it's 45 feet, 55 feet. You know, it all depends on where you measure height. Some say that at the bottom of the E, top of the E, the median point, so the highest points in the 50s. But we haven't really even finalized that. It could be lower. We're still in the conceptual stage. And then, regarding any other thing that we've done in Chicago, this is the first project in this. And then regarding our financials, and that's not really a zoning question, a planning commission question, but we've embedded through the school district and have given them information. We had to become an approved developer by them, and have given them required information as the owner of the property to move forward with us as the developer.
So do the villagers have access to that?
I can't answer if they have access to it.
I would assume we would have access to that.
Okay, all right, fine. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the Village Board regarding this? If you want to come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, Kristy Wagner, 539 Corren's Avenue. I didn't expect to speak tonight, but there were a couple things that I wanted to ask about. First of all, Jason, you present your company as very family-oriented. One thing I think you need to correct right away is the spelling of Corren's Avenue on your initial proposal. So if you want to win over local people, please spell Corren's Avenue correctly. Secondly, what is the targeted demographic for this project? And thirdly, how is traffic to be managed at the confluence of Caryel Donklin and the new access road? Those are my questions.
Could you please answer her questions?
Yeah, sure, I can answer this. It's Jason. You know, regarding the spelling, I apologize. And we'll fix that. That's not... That's a mishap, and I apologize. Who's the demographic? So really, what we have found as our demographic is, because these are either studios, ones with two bedrooms. We get people who are downsizing. A lot of people like to use the term empty nesters. Some people are just, they don't want to live in a house, downsizing from a house, whatever it may be. That's a lot of the clientele, and that has changed dramatically in ages. It used to be people were older, they'd do that. Sometimes people are, you know, they're in their 40s, and they say, "I just want to move in." We get young professionals who want to come in, people who never went out of the house, or people who are aspiring to move out, and they want to have their own place. That's really who we get, single people and couples. We don't build playgrounds on-site for our own tenants' use unless the community makes us do because we don't attract, let's say, families in the community. I know people talk about that because schools being closed, but that's not really our target demographic. It really is singles and couples. And we get a lot of people who get two bedrooms, and there's one person in it, and they use the other bedroom as an office. And so we're starting to design our units in that fashion. So our target demographic really is everybody, but it's mostly based upon young professionals and empty nesters. Was there another question? I apologize.
Do you get traffic management?
Oh, the traffic, you know, it depends on how we do the final roadway. For us, we always have to do a traffic study. So I can't answer how the final outcome to that is. As we proceed through the process, the traffic study is part of that, and that's really what determines how we handle any offset traffic issues or issues that are potentially brought up by our project.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to answer? Is there anybody else that would like to ask a question?
Good evening, Paul in Yollinera, 575 Crenz Avenue. So Jason, given all the pictures and the design and all that other stuff, it's all very impressive. I have two questions. Number one, as far as the demographics, what is normally the target rental? That in dollars that you guys normally are in the range of? So monthly rental, how much does that cost that you're going for? And then, secondly, when it comes to property management, do you guys manage your own property or do you outsource that to other property management companies?
So regarding, thanks for the question. Regarding the rent, it's all market-driven, so I'd imagine that a, you know, one studio or one bedroom is probably 13, $1,400, and if you look around at the market, that's actually, that's kind of where things are at. And I know there hasn't been a lot of new apartments in Cary, but within the area, that's kind of the going rate and it goes up from there. And then regarding management, so we are vertically integrated. The people who work in the office, whether it's the property manager, leasing agent, maintenance people, cleaning people, they are building staff. So they report to us, we have regional managers and it funnels up into our Pittsburgh office. We're hands-on, we travel to all these sites, spend a lot of time going to every one of them. So we definitely care about that. We also do, you know, so you guys understand, we do check-ins by third parties, anonymous check-ins. We also have another company that'll come in and check, and we also pay drone companies to come and fly and look at stuff. So we're constantly looking at, make sure nothing's missing and everything is up to par, and how we want the property to look immediately.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to ask a question? I have one more coming here.
Tim Allen, 223 North School Street. I'm just a little, keep on talking, a little milky on when we do the traffic thing. Is that a pre-zoning thing, Mark, or how do these things, how do these things fit together before too many dramatic decisions are made? I mean, I think the traffic is out of state. It's a good thing.
Brian, you do want to take that?
Sure. So technically, as part of the zoning process, as part of the supplemental requirements, we're going through a zoning entitled process in the supplemental for PUD application, that would include traffic studies as part of that. So that would be documentation that you submit to support their building review as part of the project.
As just kind of prior zoning?
It's part of zoning, they've completed, yeah.
Just wondering how, how they do it.
Thank you. One more time, anybody else? Okay, I'll turn it over to the board.
I want to start. A question about parking. What would be, I saw a couple of different numbers on our parking spaces for rental units per unit. One was a little above 1.5 and one a little bit below 1.5. So my question would be, what would be this particular concept, what would be the apartment parking spaces per unit and how does that fit in with your other communities, more or less, or about the same?
This is Jason. So, yeah, regarding the parking, 1.5 is our standard number. So we have a couple of different scenarios. One has the road in the back and one doesn't. When we have the road in the back, we lose space for parking. It's just how it works regarding the layout. 1.5 is something we use everywhere. A lot of communities now will have no parking minimum, no parking maximums. Some places don't even have parking requirements combined, but we need to make sure that we have enough parking for people. So really what it means is, if you split the community in half, one bedroom's have one parking spot, two bedrooms have two. But it doesn't really work out that way. Normally, we have two bedrooms, one person, and sometimes there's two in a one bedroom. We don't have parking issues on our properties, the number always works out. And then in the development side, I think we got two per unit because they're larger properties. But that is the number, as developers, I know it's always a question that comes up just like traffic. People say, oh, well, the parking, and what's that number really mean? Well, if we can't have people park at a property, then we don't have a property.
Why do you gather your thoughts here and you've been asked over here for like to ask a couple of questions?
Well, then, that's what we're here for. Is there any affordable, is there any affordable housing coming to this project now? Since that is something that we look around all communities, it's something that is being asked for by the government and also if the current community has a property, so I'm just curious if there's anything like that at all considered.
There are no proposed on this site, correct?
How about, you talked about the, I understood you were going to, but you might have to raise the site a little bit. Could you explain that a little bit? I thought I heard somebody mention that the site, parts of the site were built in the first, I understand, or is that something?
No, you're right, Rocco can answer that, probably not I can. Absolutely. The way this site currently sits right now, there's an extensive amount that would be inundated by a local reasonable factor based upon the construction of the culvert under the railroad. John, if you could flip back to a few pages, it kind of shows the existing configuration of what would be inundated. Yep? Forward one. Perfect, thank you. That really shows what's inundated today. Now, we need to bring up the grade in those areas to create the development path, and that's one of the most significant challenges here. Not only do you do that in a responsible way to ensure that there's enough storage on site, but also elevating the buildings, the proposed buildings, above that flood elevation that we're identifying as a regional concern. And that is exacerbated because the site unfortunately is also hamstrung by some limitations of soils. There's about three and a half to six feet, in some locations, eight to 11 feet of poor fill that was placed in previous fill occurrences that's going to need to be reparked and removed and replaced, which is a significant challenge over putting that amount of material, you know, and elevating that. So there's going to be a significant earthwork in that location to raise that up, given the combination of the inundation from stormwater and also the poor soils that exist on-site today. So creating that development path, you're correct, sir, we're elevating that up above that elevation, 823.
So to follow up with that, with that groundwork that you have to do, would that cause any potential problems to any of the community?
That's actually exactly why we did the analysis, made sure we're providing the same quantity of storage in terms of cubic feet on our site at the various elevations to ensure we're not changing that dynamic or, you know, considerably pushing water onto another site. That's not something that would typically be reviewed. It's not a code requirement, land development. Quite frankly, we weren't doing our due diligence to the degree we are. You know, we probably, that would maybe something to be overlooked by another team. But we've gone to a very, very long calculation to ensure that that amount of water is stored on our site perpetually.
And notwithstanding the cost of doing this, does this site lend itself at all to underground parking?
The site does not lend itself to underground parking. One, because of the stormwater issue. Two, also, the site's actually located in a very difficult area today. There's poor soils on top of it, as I said, anywhere from three to 11 feet in some areas. And then below that, there's a tremendous amount of flacite till, which is large holders and stone. So it gets very difficult to do, just from a programmatic and engineering perspective, to remove that material, replace it. But we want everything to be above that 100-year elevation. And that was something that's been dictated by our builders to ensure that, you know, this is going to be half-longevity. It's not something that they're going to flip around in three, five years. This is going to be there, they want to ensure that, as you noted, the dry tire concept, so that we're keeping the parking lot dry in that 100-year event.
Can I connect to Mr. Wall?
Yes, thank you, I appreciate the time to pull out my thoughts. If I could draw the attention to the Crenz and Prairie intersection. You did go out of your way on this concept, it's the other areas down Crenz and School to include townhome units that offer from single-family into this multi-family area. However, it seems to have fallen short on the eight or 10 homes that are along the north side of Crenz Avenue. It seems like they go from having their current backdrop to having a parking lot in the backyard. So what kind of, what kind of break can we have for those folks when they're looking out the back of their home? Do you need some greenery or something along those lines in the concept so they're just not looking at a rural park?
Yeah, I can answer that. We're happy to do landscape buffers or, you know, in the back there. We have communities just like this where we come up right against homes and, you know, we want to be good neighbors. So for us, we're happy to do landscape buffers and fill that in so people don't feel as if we're looking right into a parking lot and living next to it. Thank you.
Trustee, tell me.
Sure. I want to start off by saying that I appreciate it seems like you've taken a lot of time, I was going to say listener here, that you've taken the time to kind of address some issues that have come up in the past. You know, one of the biggest issues is a lot of flooding, and the fact that you've done extra due diligence on this, I appreciate. I think that a lot of our residents appreciate that you're taking and taking this a step further than just doing the minimum, but going to a position where you want to be good neighbors. You know, looking at all the different plans, it's always a, it's a challenge. When you go from a site that was, you know, an old school site, obviously it's been vacant for 10 years, but, you know, we still had all of, a lot of our residents, including my children and lots of others that I know that have a lot of fond memories of playing baseball there. So trying to come up with a way to also incorporate a lot of green space. I know you're also due to because of the flood issue, but I truly appreciate that you're addressing a lot of that because I think people, you know, we want to make sure that we have a lot of green space available for people moving forward. I appreciate that you're taking the time here as a starting point. I know that we're not going on anything, we're just kind of getting the ball rolling. But I know one of those biggest issues also is the traffic pattern, the concern of that, how we're going to incorporate that, how the financial responsibilities of who's going to be doing some of these things, whether it's in cooperation with other, us or some other tax bodies, however we're going to work that out. I know that that is a big, a big price tag there. You know, some people have chatted about, there's been some concern about if it was going to impact the schools negatively, meaning that there would be such an overabundance of additional school-aged children. And I think that you've addressed that that's really not your targeted demographic of people that are managing your properties. I think that's extremely important because that was concerning to see that that was going to oppress on our current school and how we would work around that. You know, I think right now, it's a gathering stage, and I appreciate all the things that you've come and shared with us, you know, asked for questions. I think some of those come as we go to the steps further, and I think that getting to the zoning and figuring out what we're doing with the traffic patterns and things like that would lead to some other possible changes. I like the materials that you're proposing. I like the fact that it's a luxury type of apartment. I like that it is market rent. So to me, there's a lot of positives since the starting point here. But I'm sure that there'll be additional questions come up, but those are my initial, my initial thoughts on it.
Hi, this is Jason, I just want to say thank you for that, we appreciate that as well. We really try to be responsive. I know nothing gets voted on here, but I think a big question for us, really, we wanted to walk away from. And, you know, if we get an answer, that's great, we go, I understand, but should we pursue a road that connects? Should we not? You know, that's, that's a really big deal for us because it's a, it's a different plan. And I think we kind of wanted to show what that really means because, as you just stated, it's, you know, how's the traffic pattern working, all that. You know, we could go down the road and find out, nobody wants to do it or everybody wants to do it. And I think that's, that's a really big question we should ask ourselves as we proceed tonight. So I just wanted to interject that again, I really do appreciate your comments, I'm glad that, you know, we're doing what we can and we appreciate you being here to us, to listen to us, so thank you.
Let me address that about the road. In the Village of Cary, we typically take a stance where we want to be collaborative when we look at things. I think that's a discussion that we need to have with staff and board to see what their appetite is for the potential road. It's been identified in our comprehensive plan for many years that we need a road exiting that property, and it just, it's going to come down to the finances. That's something that we need to have a conversation about within our board. But I just want to emphasize to you that, you know, this is our first real discussion about this as a board. You know, we've seen some of these articles before, but just to have other people have an opportunity to just keep their mind and ask these questions, it's more of a mission finding for your stance as well as ours. So I'll turn it over some more. Any other questions? Trustee, want to give, do you have any questions?
That's great, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Jason, you said just now that your concept would change depending on, you did have a roadway access behind development. How would that change, like what would that look like?
Well, I think, you know, we really have two concepts here. One has the road and one doesn't. The one that doesn't, you know, has a larger stormwater area on our site, which frankly, legally makes a lot more sense because, you know, how do we, how do we deal with water overflow going across property, which is what would the outcome be, stormwater system that crossed from one side to the other? Furthermore, there is a roadway system that needs to be built up to our property, who pays for that? And then there's a roadway in the back of our property, which, again, kind of curtails the stormwater, but also takes away some parking. So that's, that's one, and then the other one doesn't have that. And that's really the big concept. When I say the concepts, it's what we're, our starting point here. Nothing set in stone as we're all just talking, but those are kind of the two big, you know, big differences amongst them.
Okay, so the number of units would stay the same and everything else is?
Yeah, the, yeah, the number of units would stay the same, yep.
Just a quick question, Brian, what is our height description?
That's the zoning district. In that zoning industry, the property currently is zoned for single-family residents, so the maximum height is 300. Does it do? Thanks. I'll repeat that. The maximum height with the property currently is zoned for single-family, so the maximum height is 30 feet within the zoning district. With the project of this scope and scale, obviously we go through zoning process, we improve this by unit development. So depending what the PUD process allows for more flexibility in design, from a perspective, as far as what we do from a code perspective. Comparatively, the B1 district, which is right next to the site, which is the downtown district, maximum height is 50 feet. And the proposed structures that they have now is measured to the midpoint of the roof, which is how we determine the maximum height for structure is, is at 47 feet. So they would be below than 50 for threshold, that our maximum height would be for the B1 district. Thank you.
Trustee, could I, do you have anything?
I was going to say, is there elevator?
Jason, have there elevators?
Sorry, was there elevator?
Yeah, he said one of your areas. Adults, so we're about four blocks, stairs, so four three.
That would be a building code requirement, yes.
Yeah, they're all elevator, and I forgot to mention that, we say it so much, forget, but yeah, they're all elevator and they're all sprinkled. But yeah, we definitely, the elevator is really the big change, why we do the four stories, because at the threes, you don't see a lot of three-story buildings with elevators because of the financials of that, but at the four-story, we definitely do it, and that's a big added bonus, really makes it a luxury community. Of course, all the stairwells and everything are closed, so you're, you feel like you're in a much larger building.
I think we would go through the process on that. Did you have any? Did you have anything else, trustee? Trustee Dunick?
Has the feasibility study done that? Is there been a feasibility study done by the company?
Feasibility study pertaining to what?
Well, you know, it's a big one here, financing fees. Bank is going to ask for a feasibility study to see if absorption is there, market rents are right. And that would help, I think, you as a developer determine that, I've heard them.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, for us, we have our internal pro forma market analysis that we do. So, yeah, you know, we don't go to market and have a big market study done, but we base it upon that and we work with our banks as well to make sure that they're on board.
So I heard you mentioned that they were renting around 1,300 square feet for $1,300. Is that for your two-bedroom unit, your largest unit, or is that for the studio? Or is that...
That's for the...that would probably be for the studio.
To me, as part of this, the reason I asked for the feasibility study, I know I work in the financial services industry, so this is all about dollars consents for new folks as developers. And to me, when I heard 1,300, I was worried about that's your upper-end unit, that seems possible. Rental rents are in high demand. Rents are increasing all the time. And one of the things that this board has heard, the previous boards have heard repeatedly is density. And to me, if you can build a higher-end product and have lower units, charge a higher rent, you still get the same return on your investment. So part of the thing that I would just challenge you to think about perhaps as we move forward is could you lower density, make the unit either a little bit larger or put some amenities in there like Garden Place or something like that to boost the rent? So that you as an investor gets the same return as the community gets a better project and maybe doesn't have as high a density.
So, no, we appreciate that. Our studios feel big. They're about 525 square feet and our two bedrooms go all the way up to 1,300 square feet. And depending on the market, you know, we have places where they're over $3,000 above. No, that's not here. I'd expect to get that. So, but there are, you know, and I do appreciate you acknowledging the rents are going up. So creating a better, a more expensive product would go a long way. I think our mix here of having people from Alstrada, people who say, look, I just want a good place, and then people who want a long-term place, we found that this mix kind of gets into that point. But again, as we proceed, we're not etched in stone on the final product. Everything we've shown is kind of tested, the product, they fit the finish, are kind of our caliber. And we're happy to discuss all that stuff as we go further. Our Belmonts there, these townhouses, really would fit the market you're talking about. There's 20 of them, where people get a real home that they can rent, park their cars and all that kind of stuff. So, but that's really great stuff. We appreciate that.
And then my last comment. You showed one of your pictures, I think of the 99 building, it looked like it was sort of a curved sort of approach. I think that was very attractive. And I don't know, you know, how we can incorporate more of that into the development as a whole because I can tell you that the mayor's very familiar with the project that I mentioned here. We have a project brought to the board a number of years ago that, like, the first iteration came through, it just wasn't anything that we wanted to have here. And that was done over and over on a number of different drawings. Whether you like the project today or not, it's not the issue. It's much more attractive as a feasibility than it was when we developed the first project. And I would echo trustee Kalu's comments. When I first looked at the pictures, I felt very much like I did about the project I just mentioned. Cary is better and it should be a development that's much more attractive to the community.
Anything else? I have a couple of things. Throughout the years, just to put everybody at ease, the Village of Cary is no longer on our watch list for affordable housing. We were at times when we were going through the Garden Place Apartments. That was a big issue for us to get this done. We are no longer on the watch list. So we are no longer seeking any type of development like this. This fits in with what our community is asking for. I hear over and over again, there's people that I know personally that have sold their homes and have gone to Crystal Lake to rent an apartment because we have nothing like this here in Cary. And I hear this over and over and over again. We have a lot of empty nesters that just don't want their big house anymore, but they love being downtown, they love being close to Metro, they love being close to our restaurants and their shopping malls, it's been a part of who gives their churches as well. So I welcome a development like this to kind of piggyback off what trustee Dunick said. I think that, well, we have some work to do on the elevations. I've said that from day one when we've seen these. I'd love to be able to show you where we were with what the Garden Place Apartment looks like before we had it redesigned in collaboration with the developer, and they were very happy about it. I would also like to know if you've been through our community, driven through our community and seen some of the new developments that are going on and seeing what our building standards are. I think it's important for you to see what we have done. Everything is brick, stone, party board. You know, look at our Cary Senior Living, look at the Garden Place Apartments, look at our building we just built here, look at our train station, all the other developments that we have. We are trying to get everybody on the same page because, as trustee Dunick said, we're better than some of these things. And I'm willing to listen to what other options you have. Another big thing that I hear about this and some of these luxury apartments that are going in Crystal Lake, they all have garages. That's a big deal. People are downsizing from a, you know, 25, 3,000 square foot house and they want a garage. So I was wondering if there's any thought of adding garages, either exterior garages or first-floor garages that we seem to have been able to put together when the previous developer came through here. He added the underground, that wasn't underground, it was the first floor of the building were garages. And that would eliminate a lot of the parking that's on the exterior apartment. So these are just some of the thoughts that I've been thinking about, the community has been asking me about. Actually, a lot of the people that I talk about welcome something like this as long as it meets what our standards are.
Yeah. Can I ask you a question? Would somebody propose a project here with garages on this site?
Yes. On the first floor. First floor was parking?
Yeah, I think, yeah, and I appreciate that. I think Rocco had talked about that and stuff, the soils. The reason we're not doing something like that are the, really, the bad soils that exist on site. You know, what we did was we did so much upfront that we normally wouldn't have done at this point to find out so we know if we could go forward. So I don't know if that works for us, but we have done detached garages. And what we find is in certain areas, they're hit and other places, they're not. But we can look at that as we go forward. You know, we find that some, you know, definitely people do want them and it's all a matter of space and I'm happy to look at those and see where they fit. So, you know, I do appreciate that. These are all very good sentiments, but we all see the same thing, the location and all that kind of stuff. So it's very good. Thank you.
You know, we want it to be representative of our downtown district, you know.
Of course, yeah.
You know, we have one shack to get this and we want to get it right, I think, everybody on the board, as well as the community. We have an obligation to the community to listen to their input and figure out what's going to be the best for that particular site and how it affects their community. So...
Of course.
Anybody else have any other questions? All right, thank you very much. We appreciate your time, Jason and your team. We will be in touch.
Hey, thank you all very, very much. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving forward, we'll move to the administrative report. Mr. Reif? Department heads, Chief Finland.
Just an informational item for the board that we did appoint a new police officer, Tashiana Hope. She's currently at Suburban Law Enforcement Academy, attending the basic law enforcement course, and we'll be introducing her to the board on the next, at the next Village Board meeting on the 18th.
Thank you, chief. Director Marvolo? Nothing? Director Simmons? Talk to him after. Thank you.
Actually, Mayor, I will add this for the purpose that we will get these slides up on our website so everyone will be able to access these slides that you saw this evening on our website.
Thank you. Any future agenda items and discussion bench report? I will entertain a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss personnel appointment, deployment, compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees. Illinois 120/2C1 and litigation pending or imminent. Illinois 120/2C1. Thank you. Now that we're in our new building, we leave. You stay here. We do have some action at the end of the voting on what we're talking about in there. So we still have more business to do when we come back. So you'll excuse us for a minute. I'll continue the motion to adjourn to the executive session.
Waller? Duda?
Yes.
Novelli? Galway?
Yes.
Wymanhammer?
Yes.
Laura?
Okay, I will entertain a motion to return from executive session. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 833. We have one item left on the agenda for tonight. I will, because I wrote it out. I will entertain a motion to, for a consideration of an agreement to employ legal counsel regarding PEST and Poly...PEST, Poly, whatever the substance is, with the final village and attorney of court. All right, I'll do that. Did I entertain a motion in a second? Roll call, please.
Wymanhammer?
Yes.
Galway?
Yes.
Duda?
Yes.
Laura?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Novelli?
Yes.
Thank you. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There are no opposed. We are adjourned.